Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
And now you can see me.
Yeah, now I can see you.
Life is good. Hi, John.
Hello, Eleanor. Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
Ah, okay, because I got a message in my speaker was it my uh...
Yeah, it wasn't at first.
It wasn't?
And you had us all muted.
Ah, sorry about that. Karen's iPhone. Hey, Don! Welcome to the meeting! Ah, you're muted.
How are you guys doing?
Hey, welcome back!
Oh my god, a blast from the past!
You know, it's a new beginning, right? January!
January? This beats going out in the weather on January, doesn't it?
It sure does, except for the dog barking.
Oh, well. I think mine just went back upstairs figuring I was out of chicken. So, how is everyone?
Good. Cold?
Cold? Well, it's good. While I think of it, have you gotten more people involved in Susan B Anthony neighborhood to make sure that you've got an alternate if you can't make it sometime?
Um, no, we've been a little dormant, you know, since COVID. And we've had some neighbors move in and we've done some preservation grant programs and things to connect us, but nothing in the normal format that we once had, you know?
Yeah.
These new people don't know where, you know, how we met every month, where we met every month. Yeah, so, but um, yeah, we've had informal meetings in the park. And we've, you know, last year I was kind of busy with the preservation program we did, which got us talking with each other and doing some stuff around the neighborhood, you know?
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to...
I'm here and I can feel it. I need to get my phone.
So, you know, I'm kind of trying hard here at this time of year to revive things, so people are coming to meetings and inviting new people in so that we can pass the baton to another generation, you know? It's important. Louis Aponte, hey! One of the guys that started me down this road. Louis was involved with school 17 back when we jumped into the fray to get 16 going again. And he and Ralph Spesio came to a meeting and told us what his neighborhood was doing around school 17 and we've been trying to apply those things to what we're doing. And the Southwest Common Council was a vehicle for doing that, so we're trying to keep the council alive and make sure that it'll be there the next time we have something that needs a little muscle to get things done.
Good evening, everyone, good evening.
How you doing, Louis?
Trying to stand on the right side of the dirt, that's all we could do, right?
That's right, hey, that's hard enough at our age, you know? Okay, who else? Oh, Bonnie, Bonnie with a Y. There she is. Gee, you're looking good there, Bonnie, you got a cup of coffee in your hands. Welcome, welcome. Hi, Lizelle, how you doing?
I'm good, John, how are you?
Good, good, I'm glad you could make it and hopefully we can make sure that everybody's got a good feel for what we've been trying to accomplish and will help bring new people to the fold to keep this organization moving forward the way the people in it at that time see fit, but also I've been trying to concentrate on the education committee of this group, so it'll be good to find some new faces to run the Southwest Common Council. And whatever it takes, you know, it may be several months, but that's my goal anyways right now and the Lizelle Taylor is involved with all the community schools in Rochester. So she and I see each other frequently at all these various meetings we attend. And this is, you know, one good place for her to get a sounding of what's going on in the community and what groups she might need to connect with to do her job with the city school district. I know we've got a few more people that will be joining us, but why don't we why don't we go start going around and we can introduce ourselves and say what group we're working with and what we'd like to get out of this interaction. Name's John Lutte, I chair the Southwest Common Council and the Education Committee of the Southwest Common Council, work with the 19th Ward Schools Committee and Rochester Coalition for Public Education and Citizens Action and AQE, so a lot of education situations. John? John Kern?
John Kern with Reach Advocacy, which is involved with homeless shelters and affordable housing and West Side Farmers Market and Rapid Cemetery.
Okay. Eleanor?
Eleanor Coleman, I am with Catholic Family Centers Youth Build Program. And I'm the scribe for, I'm also with Rotary Southwest and I'm the scribe for this group.
Good. Don?
Hi, Don Noto from the Susan B Anthony Neighborhood Association. And I'm glad to be back seeing everybody here tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we are delighted to have you back. Don, by the way, was one of the original co-chairs for the Southwest Common Council Education Committee and she was the co-chair of this group at that time. So we have, we go back a ways.
I go back with Louis Aponte when we were co-chairs for Sector 3.
Ah!
When the neighborhood wasn't even a part of the Southwest. So, yeah, many years.
Yeah.
Many years.
We want to make sure that all that hard work keeps moving forward. Okay, let's see. Bob Thompson?
Yeah, I'm Bob Thompson, I'm the guy from the other side of the river in the Saturday Island Park Neighborhood Association and a member of MMBN, which is Many Neighbors Building Neighborhood.
Welcome.
Bonnie?
Hi there, I'm Bonnie Mayer and living in this country for this winter, unfortunately, rather than being in Thailand. So, but anyway, I'm with Corn Hill Neighborhood Association and we're kind of like everybody else, trying to survive without a lot of contact and but we still manage to do a few things, so that's where it's at.
Uh, let's see, Lee, you wanna?
Hi there, I'm Lee Loomis, I lead a tutoring team sponsored by the Rochester Engineering Society at Dr. Walter Cooper Academy, Number 10 School. We have been out of a job for 24 months now. We're anxious to find a way to get back there and get busy. Looks like it's gonna have to be virtual for the foreseeable future. But we need some guidance and it's been offered by the principal, Dr. Eva Thomas, to help us get some training for our usually in-person tutors to get comfortable with the virtual online tutoring.
Great. Louis?
Hello, my name is Louis Aponte. Don, I miss you, I haven't seen you in years. And that is true, we are a former president of Sector 3 and current chair of CHNA, Charles House Neighbors in Action, and I'm a board member for Charles Sudden House since 2008. Very interested, I sit on a committee that helped run school 17 to make decisions as the first community school in the city of Rochester.
Yeah, that's something you'll have to talk about, I'm sure Lizelle Taylor will be interested in that. Let's see, I've got Shaniqua. You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hello everyone, I'm Shaniqua Smith, I'm the Assistant Administrator at the Southwest Neighborhood Service Center, I'm filling in for John McMahon today. He had another engagement he had to attend. We dealt with quality of life issues to sum it up. If you have any questions or concerns, please reach out.
Great, thank you. Joe Baldino?
Yes, I'm Joe Baldino, Principal School 29 in the Southwest, South Quadrant and 19th Ward. Was a teacher for a long time at Wilson, for about 19 years left, came back in 2016 as principal of School 29. Come to the meetings to stay on top of things, I can stay for about a half an hour, John, just so you know, okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Lizelle?
Hi, my name is Lizelle Taylor, I'm the Director of Community Schools. It's nice to meet everyone and thank you, John, for having me. I'm working with so many of our community schools, you know, addressing needs and trying to make things happen to those schools and I appreciate the support of everyone, thank you.
Okay, let's see, who else do we have? Karen? They're moving around on me, yes?
Donna Sarnacki's on the phone.
Yeah. Pardon me, somebody's trying to get in. Hey, Donna? Ha ha ha! I sent it out enough times that people, I'm sure. Um, that's okay, let me see if I can find it here.
Do you want me to send the invitation to Donna Sarnacki by email?
Donna Sarnacki, that would be good, Eleanor. Eleanor's gonna email it to you, okay? Thank you, very good. Okay, take care. Wouldn't be right if Donna missed a meeting. Um, let's see, well, Karen hasn't gone yet.
Karen Emerson, current president of 19th Ward Community Association. And like everybody else, we're trying to do the best we can at keeping things going during this time of COVID. I think our last time we met was two years ago, March.
Yeah. Good. And see, is there anybody else who hasn't gone yet? Bonnie, did you go? Yeah, okay. Alrighty, I think everyone's introduced themselves.
You want to go into Quadrant News?
Yeah, I think that's, let's do that. I've been connecting with a lot of people, including people in the our new mayor's administration, because there are a lot of things, especially in the area of the schools work we've been doing that we want to make sure that everything that we were doing with the previous administration gets at least not lost unintentionally with the transition here, so Leanna Ruse is, was going to be here, but she had a conflicting meeting and she's one of the people who is gonna be working with us when we need to get something done with the new administration. And Koji? Where did she go? Koji, where'd you go? Okay, there we go. Okay. I need somebody to run the buttons here. Multitasking isn't my forte at this point in my life.
You can share the administrative thing so someone else can do that.
Ah, okay, I'll have to...
So you can make someone else co-host and they can let people in and monitor it so you don't have to.
How do I make somebody co-host?
You go to the participant list.
Mm-hmm.
And then the three little dots next to their name, you just click on that. And it will say make co-host.
Ah, okay. Let's see. Eleanor, you're already busier than I can imagine. You want to do that today, Karen?
You know what, I just tried to do it, I'm on my iPhone, I'm not on my computer.
Ah, okay.
And it's not, it's not working for me, or I would, I would be happy to do it.
You can try giving it to me, John, let me try it. I'll get the notifications when people come in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or... Can't stop video, too, by the way.
And John, the only reason I know that is because of the 19th Ward Community Association meetings, where I tried to do both jobs and it's not possible.
Yeah, I know. I...
It's the only reason I know it.
It may be that with the version that I have, that I don't have that. I don't see...
Well, don't worry about it this time.
Okay, we'll have to work it out, something we... A to-do list, okay. We were talking about Quadrant News, so the one of the things that I want to make sure that we coordinate with the mayor and with the school board is many of the groups that I'm involved with on education are reaching out to some of the newly elected Assembly members and Senate members to try to get ahead of steam up so that hopefully we can pass some of the legislation that is needed. Primarily, they're primarily looking at the school issues now, but this is a good time. If there are other issues that we should be looking at to have you make it known and work with us so we can make sure we get maximum leverage as we try to get things done. We've tried in the past and haven't had any success, but it looks like we've got a pretty, pretty good cooperation between several of these groups and we've had meetings with two Assembly members and senators so far and we've got another one scheduled for a little later this month, I think. So, that's one of the things that... Hmm. Nobody there. So that's one of the things that I would like to make sure we think about and I'll if there, is there something that you know of that we should put on the table as an issue that we should be doing some lobbying about?
Well, I kind of have an issue, I think, is occurring that maybe we don't know or talk about, is how many kids didn't go back to school? I think I have neighbors that are afraid to send their kids back, because I haven't seen buses and I know there's three kids down there, all different ages, and there was always at least two buses. And they're still down there. And so, and I know it's homeschooling now, but even when it was back to school, so I'm just curious, do we know that information in the Southwest or Southwest? Are kids in your neighborhood, are they all back to school?
Oh. Lizelle, do you have a good feel for what schools are back in person and this is over in the Corn Hill area you're talking about, Don?
Yeah, I could just tell you that in the morning, because I get out and walk the dog, I would say that there's 10 buses that come across the street to the Rochester Housing Authority location, because none of them go to the school that's in our neighborhood. So they are bussed everywhere and there is a lot of buses. And then the afternoon, there's another bunch of buses, someplace between 2:30 and about 4:00, which, you know, slows up the neighborhood. But while I just have the floor, I just want to say that at Corn Hill is going to be writing a very very wonderful letter to the city and particularly to the DES, because this is the first time that any of us can remember that we have had a snowplow down our side streets in at least the last 10 years. And with all this snow, we were all prepared to go out and shovel the street, because that's what we've done for years. And we could not believe it, normal, really big snowplows, not just red up plow or whatever, really cleaned up the snow in Corn Hill so that everything was quite passable. I really, it was just absolutely amazing. So that's just my positive thing to the city.
I'm glad you brought that up, that is so true. I went out the day after all this and it was so clear. All over.
Yeah, I was referring to Corn Hill when I was talking to Donna there, but she's Susan B Anthony Neighborhood, so that's where you were seeing kids not catching the bus?
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're back in school and I'd heard that there was a concern of the mom of them, about COVID.
Yeah.
You know, I just wondered, are all the kids accounted for and back in school?
I think there's, you know, attendance varies at different schools for different reasons. Of course, depending on what school you're in, transportation is still an issue for some people, you know? I know I had some struggles with their transportation. Number 9 School had some struggles with their transportation, depending on the school, and of course, for obvious reasons with COVID. You know, the range is so, so wide. You know, whether it's, you know, unvaccinated, whether it's, you know, too young to get the vaccine. It's just a variety of reasons. Attendance is sort of ebbing and flowing at schools, but we're starting to get a lot more students back in school full-time since we're back, all schools being open as of Tuesday.
Okay.
But attendance is still an issue, yes.
Yeah.
But it's better than it has been, so I don't know if that's a good thing, good answer or not.
Well, that's something we can share with them, to maybe encourage them to, you know, if people aren't sending their kids, you know, when we talk with our neighbors, to spread the word that more people are going back to school.
Yeah, check with them and see if they're vaccinated, whether their kids are vaccinated. It depends a lot on each family as to
Right.
what risks they can take, you know?
Right.
Right. But, you know, you know, there's a song, you know, we're not where we used to be, we're not where we ought to be, but we're not where we used to be either. Stop.
Yeah, and that's a good reason for us to seize the day, because right now things are so screwed up with the impact of COVID that we really that there are a lot of things that just are not going to go back to the way they were and we'd want to make sure they go back to something that's as good as we can make it. So this is a time for action, as much as I'd like to crawl back into bed many mornings. And sometimes I do, but... Okay. Is there any news on Corn Hill, not Corn Hill, Bull's Head? That's something that is going to be impacting the 19th Ward and Neighborhoods United area in particular, because that's where it is. And also Cots area of the city. Anything new, Shaniqua?
Sorry, I was trying to press the unmute button. Give me a second here, we do have some updates for you guys. The update on the Bull's Head project, and this is from Rick Rinsky, is that the environmental due diligence is a cleanup and is moving ahead on various brownfield sites. In particular, DES will be advancing a cleanup project at 24 and 32 York Street this year. Also, we expect the selected developer team to prepare and present a preliminary proposed development plan this summer for public review comments. They are continuing their due diligence with existing data analysts towards a proposal. And that was from, you know, Rick Rinsky on the Bull's Head project. As far as the update for the Southwest Neighborhood Service Center, we recently distributed over 5,000 rapid test kits to the barber shops, salons, and also places of worship. And we are waiting for dates, you know, for further distribution. The next time, we will be for individuals to register online and pick up four kits per household. Because during the process when we were issuing it to the shops and the salons, we had a lot of people come in, you know, trying to get kits for themselves and their households. So being that we saw that that was a demand, you know, we offered to use our location for them to be able to come in and pick up those kits. We will let you know as soon as that date is available, we're waiting to hear back for when the next shipment is going to come in. As far as the service center itself goes, we're currently interviewing applicants for our two vacant clerical positions. So we got some interviews set up so we can get back to being full staff. We also preparing a proposal and securing funds for the AmeriCorp intern to serve as a Neighborhood Associate Ambassador, so he can kind of help, you know, task with finding ways to bolster attendance for existing groups. And also assist with establishing new block clubs in an inclusive manner. For the most part, let me see if we have anything else. What went on? Okay, so the first round of community meetings is to review draft zoning maps and use tables with Southwest, except for downtown Wilson Magnet High School Auditorium, which is at the 5, I'm sorry, 501 Genesee Street will be Thursday, February 10th. That's going to be the first round of community meetings. If anybody need that link, I can put it in the chat, if anyone's interested, I'll drop it there.
Yeah, please do.
Yes, please do. Absolutely.
Because that's something that Eleanor can make use of when she's pulling things together for the minutes.
Not a problem.
And I still don't see Donna coming in. Did you send her the note, Eleanor?
Yeah.
Okay. What was that?
Alright, I just sent it again.
Okay, I see there's one person in the... Ah, there she is. Okay. There's something I don't understand yet about this system. There's Donna. We were just looking for you, Donna.
Yeah, I know, I'm just gonna, I don't know what I'm gonna do. Hello, everybody?
Hi, Donna.
Hello. Hello. Okay, I'll be quiet. Let's run a meeting here.
You can introduce yourself while.
Oh, I am Donna Sarnacki, the person who seems to can't, I know there were all these emails and stuff like that. I am District 10 for the 19th Ward Community Association and I also sometimes come to this meeting if I can get on. Anyway, live on Post Avenue. That's, that's it. That's me.
She attends a lot of meetings, don't you?
I know.
She's a good citizen. Okay. Yeah, I, we also had Stella Wang, which we hoped would join us, but I heard from, at another meeting earlier today that she's up to her ears in making all of her, putting all of her courses online so that more people can get involved with it. She's, she does a lot of work from the University of Rochester doing outreach projects into the community. So she sends, you know, some of her students get particular assignments to go do something. Hopefully, we can get one of them into this group sometime. But anyways, she's busy right now with all that reorganization. Um, let's see. Anything else from New Quadrant News or Bull's Head or anything else that somebody wants to talk on?
Well, it's kind of in the Bull's Head neighborhood. This is, the House just recently announced development on Jefferson Ave and Brown Street. He has given them properties on Jefferson Ave, some for parking and then some for development of a bigger visitor's center and place to archive their historic artifacts, something that's museum durable. Where they're at right now isn't, so they really need to move on that. So they're moving ahead with the site down there. You know, where the sculpture is, there'll have to be some reworking of the road down there. It's silver and brown and Jefferson. So they'll do some earth studies first. They're going to try to buy the tire shop and bikes, the guy that sold the bikes and stuff down there. They're buying that along with the city property.
Did you have something you wanted to say, John?
Yeah, also in the Bull's Head area is 720 West Main Street, the rectory building next to St. Peter and Paul Coptic Orthodox Church. Something West Main is going to be opening soon as a winter time shelter for the homeless. And it'll be serving about 14 persons starting as early as next week. And meals will be brought in from St. Peter's Kitchen. Persons will have the individual rooms there. So for each individual, one room. And then they're voted to have laundry and food taken care of and they'll be starting very soon. Also on Willow Bank Street, not too far from West Main and St. Peter and Paul's, is another homeless shelter that is also supported by Reach Advocacy that has 10 persons that's, they're currently being served.
Where's this? I'm sorry, John. Where's Willow, Willow Bank? Where is that?
Number two Willow Bank is off West Main Street, near St. Peter and Paul Rectory.
Oh. And that'll be another 10 people?
Yes, this year Reach has to do a scattered site approach. Formerly, we could have one building prior to COVID, but now with the one person per room restriction, we now have, we'll be having at least four separate sites, which makes things very complicated, but much more needed.
Good. Let's see, Luntori has joined us.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm doing double duty today.
Yeah, I know how that is.
Yeah, taking two tutorings and picking up from activities and it's cold out there.
Oh, God, yeah.
But I was moving to get here, John.
Good, good. Thank you very much. We, I was hoping we'd have Stella Wang join us because, well, I sent a note to you and to her. But apparently she's busy with revamping some of the courses she's doing for online.
Who is that? I'm sorry, John, I didn't.
That was Stella Wang that we talked a little bit about at the last meeting.
Yep.
So I don't know if she'll join us yet. We just had Janil Crocker, is it?
Yes, it's Janil. How are you?
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you and Luntori could introduce yourselves as to what groups you're working with. Go ahead, Janil, since you're talking now.
Sure, yes. I'm Janil Crocker and I work at Connected Communities. We're a place-based, a place-based nonprofit that works in the Beechwood and Emma neighborhoods. Some of you may or may not have heard of us. We've done a lot of work in our education pillar in terms of providing the site coordination position at School 33 and developing the community school work there. And also partnership with East and just working on the neighborhood education goals. That's a part of our work. So I'm just here sitting in and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much for coming. Luntori, do you want to fill us in a little bit on things you're involved in?
Yes, well, first and foremost, I continue to be a member of United Christian Leadership Ministry. I'm also, at this present time, working for Generational Engagement Matters, which is merely a continuation under that name for the essay Promotions of Regarding Gun Violence in the Community that was started last year. And like I've shared with everyone, I'm looking to increase out to the schools that we want to connect and be able to have them participate with those essays and pretty much make it more successful than we even found it last year. And I'm not minimizing last year at all because in spite of the COVID, we had over 60 participants. We were able to give out significant cash prizes. The highest price was, cash prize was $300 to three of the winning students. And the rest of them were respectfully $200 to $150 each for the third prize. So to me, there's a great value in it because it's an opportunity to do something that oftentimes doesn't happen enough. And that is to give a platform to the young people to be able to help them elevate their message and to really let some of the older ones like myself, and I count myself as in an older generation, but I thank God for it, that these babies really do have concerns and they really do have something to say. And many of them were able to do that through those essays. And it was really touching to me. There was times when I read it and I had to stop. The other thing too, I'm continuing trying to find a way to get Legacy Park moving. So I guess I'm into a lot of things. But I counted all to be a blessing and all of it to be worthwhile to the community.
Great, thank you very much. You do a lot. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to get Stella together with you because I think there may be a good fit there to put more.
Oh, she's always with Stella, matter of fact. Stella has already contributed to the essays and I greatly appreciate it. I don't know if she wanted me to share that. But yeah, so we, you know, like I explained, we definitely want and need donations. And we want the community to wrap around this project also and prayerfully continue it. It's not a one and done. That it should be a continuum for the children within this community.
Great. See, Courtney, did you get a chance to introduce yourself? I'm trying to make sure I include everyone. Courtney? Courtney Thomas? No. Oh, we'll come back. Koji has joined us and I know she hasn't introduced herself yet. Koji?
It's okay. I'm just gonna listen. Nothing important about me.
Okay, just tell us, you know, for the people who don't know here, who you are, what you're involved with, so they have a feel.
Well, I am retired as school teacher and I'm involved with doing volunteer work. That's it.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
And see, Courtney, are you, are you there right now?
I sure am.
Oh. Okay, you're a proxy for Malik Evans you've got written there?
Yes, indeed. Good to be here. My name is Courtney Thomas. I am the right-hand man and executive staff assistant to Mayor Malik Evans. And I just wanted to, I also live in the neighborhood. So I'm here with my fee hat on, representing the mayor's office, just listening in, but also as a neighbor and as a resident of Kenwood Avenue.
Great.
Nice.
Yeah, we've got a lot of connections we need to make sure we make with Malik Evans relative to some of the things we've been working on for the schools. So, you know, I don't want to turn this into a schools committee meeting, although I have a great tendency to do that. But anyways, you and I should review that certainly next, next week, I think it is, the schools committee meeting. I hope you can join us there and we'll get into a little more depth on what, what we've done that we want to make sure gets transferred from the last administration to this one and to explore new things also. So delighted you're here.
Yeah, absolutely and happy to be here. Definitely will continue to try to make it as much as I can. And, and yes, John, as we met before, you can always reach out to me on my cell phone and we can definitely get together. I do want to give you a heads up and to the whole group that we will be having the Neighborhood Association's Roundtable on the 31st of January at 5:30 PM via Zoom. That email was just sent out today by Neighborhood Silver Centers Director and they sent it to all of the Neighborhood Association Presidents. There's a form in there that essentially asks two questions. One, what are you really excited about for your neighborhood and your neighborhood association? And also, what would your neighborhood and a neighborhood association need to thrive? If you could narrow that down into one thing, pretty hard question. All in all, I just wanted to put that on your radar to look out for that email. We'll be having that roundtable with the presidents. And as promised before, years ago, when the mayor was a council member, a listening tour, taking those 200,000 steps for the 200,000 residents of Rochester, that is something that we have not forgotten. So please keep that in the back of your mind, but it starts with a roundtable with the presidents.
Great.
Hey Courtney, if you have a chance, give that link a click. I wasn't able to get into that form this evening when I tried it.
I sure will.
Yeah, you can put anything you'd like in the, in the chat and.
I have a, I have a question, John.
Yes, Luntori.
For Courtney. Courtney, hi, this is Luntori Johnson. And I don't know if you remember when you came to Street Voices with the mayor and we spoke.
I sure will.
Good. Well, here's a question I have. I know that, and I really like the fact that the mayor has been already connecting in a lot of important ways, especially like with the young people in the community. And I don't know how many people are aware of that, but I know he's really made a good effort at connecting with the young people here in Rochester. And I'm hearing about the community leaders for the REX, I think you said? Is it for the REX?
For the Neighborhood Service Centers.
REX Service Centers. Okay, here's a question I have. Do you know, or are you aware of the fact, if our new mayor is planning on doing an outreach to some of the activist groups within the community?
Oh, absolutely. We are absolutely planning to touch bases with a lot of our different activist groups. In fact, a lot of activist groups have already started to reach out to us to schedule kind of just one-on-ones to do kind of greetings. And from those received emails, we essentially have been just taking stock and trying to put together these roundtables, bringing everybody to the table at one time to have, you know, a common conversation and to leave with common action items. And that's really how we'll continue to do things. The biggest reason why we have not directly been meeting with activist groups just yet is because we're really focused on implementing the RACE report and we're touching bases with the county to get our ducks in a row internally with the county on the RACE report and how we really have to look at it. And then we're going to open that up to a community conversation and really start touching bases with these activist groups to say, hey, what in the RACE report do you really want us to focus on? And here's some of the things we thought about, you know, some of the suggestions that were made, some of the recommendations on how community-based organizations can involve, so forth and so forth. And we want to start that conversation with community groups before actually making specific and official recommendations and official recommendations on how to get involved. So we will absolutely be reaching out to these community groups very shortly.
I love hearing that because personally, I think that that's what's going to take an all-inclusive effort. And so I'm happy to hear that because I'm gonna be honest, I'm just tired of the silo effects that happen in the maneuvering. And I know that that has become a barrier in a lot of things that need to happen within our communities. So thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely, and we are looking forward to having a conversation. And please, keep us accountable. This is the motif that we hope to carry on and we will carry on to bring some new life into the way our city operates. And to be honest, the mayor has one rule about every meeting. You have to check your ego at the door. We're here to do common work and stay on the same page. So no matter where you're from or where you have been, you're here in the present moment to have a conversation about our city. So we'll continue just to be on the ground level and include people and bring them to the table.
Great. Delighted to hear that. The Rochester Coalition for Public Education has been looking at a lot of the items in the report and trying to do a lot more awareness of what the black and brown community has gone through and things that need to be done in terms of anti-racist efforts in the, in the area. So they, I don't know if they've gotten in touch with you yet. I know they had been working with the previous group that was working on that, but I'm sure they'll be interested in connecting with you. Okay. See, the co-chair election issues, I'll just touch on. I think most of you have heard this from me. I'm two years overdue for being retired as co-chair of the Southwest Common Council. And in fact, I've been without a co-chair for close to a couple of years now. So I'm hoping that as things get pumped up in terms of this group, that we'll find some hearty young souls to get involved with co-chairing this group. We've usually had co-chairs. The, it's a two-year stint and you can get reelected. So it's, it's a four-year if you go for reelection. But it takes a little while to know who's doing what. So, you know, usually we're looking for people to be with the group and get familiar with what, what's going on before. to be with the group and get familiar with what, what's going on before we, we pass the baton. But I, I would love to pass the baton and make sure that we have somebody to continue all this work. So anyways, if you're interested in, or you know somebody who would like to get involved with this sort of thing, refer them to this group and we'll hopefully have people get familiar with one another and so that they know who they're putting in charge. So I've been eyeing Bonnie for a while, cause she's been, she's been with this group for so many years. She's got all the expertise in the world, but she usually runs to the sunnier climes in the winter.
Well, not, not, that's, that's part of the reason, but the other real reason is the fact that I really would like to see, some, Cornhill is kind of like over here on the fringe and we have our own thing and we're a little bit different, but I'm really concerned about our neighbors and the, and the Cots and change of scenes at Plex and I would really like to see some leadership come from there. I think would be much more representative of the community than, than those of us who live over here. Some people still feel that the 1974 gentrification puts us in a bad spot to begin with. And let's be serious, we don't have as strong and integrated a neighborhood. We are probably a quarter of our neighborhood is African-American, Asian and Spanish, but I just don't think that we represent this particular area. I'm gonna come every time and be there and support. I'm gonna try to do some stuff with John over at the Neighborhood Center, but I, I just really, do I have the time and the energy and the skills, yes, but that doesn't mean that I should take the job. And I really would like to see somebody from much more of the communities that are struggling. I think it's, it's pretty well-known that, you know, we run a big festival every year, we've got a very good investment thing, and I don't think that there's another community that has $800,000 in the bank. So, amen.
You got that right. Yeah, well, I, you are one of the wonderful people we've had with us for many years and I'm sure that whoever steps in will be able to draw on your expertise and I'll do what I can.
Happy to support, happy to support.
And we, we had a few people from Swan join us last time, but they don't seem to be here this, this time. I know there were three folks I sent notices out to. And we'll have to try to make a call. Do you keep a list of who from Cots came to one of these meetings? A few, it was several months ago now, Eleanor. We're gonna have to try to, I wish I had a good database that I'm familiar with to keep track of everyone, but.
Go back through the minutes.
Yeah, have to do that. I spent half my.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say to Bonnie, Bonnie, thank you. I, I love what you had to say, that's refreshing. Because I was a child who lived in the Cornhill area, so I'm very familiar with the history and a lot of things that occurred there before the gentrification of it. So just your perspective on it says volumes to me, so I just want to let you know. I take great recognition with what you had to say, because you don't hear that often. But thank you so much for saying what you did, it was powerful.
Thank you for saying that, we've, we've been really trying to support the young people who are trying to do a great deal to do the history of Clarissa Street and so forth and so on. We've been, every year we support the Clarissa Street reunion, et cetera, but it's, it's a lot different. And for some of us who did get loans, because this house was condemned and on the wrecking block in, in 1974, and those of us that got loans, believe me, did not realize that we were an exclusive group getting the loans and it wasn't open to the general community in terms of redlining and mortgages and so forth and so on. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of bad history there and it's not something we can do anything about.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Great. Yeah, you, I work with what was formerly school number three over in Cornhill. And the new name escapes me right now, but they've received a lot of support from Cornhill recently. For quite a while, we were trying to get the school administration to connect with the Cornhill organization and it sounds like that has finally happened and they're very appreciative of the support that you folks have given them. So we're trying to make progress, but it's like herding cats sometimes. Let's see, who? So anyways, for the co-chair thing, let us know if you know somebody who would be a, a good pick for that and get them involved. You're always welcome to bring somebody new who, who is interested in getting involved with the community. That's one of the reasons I've, I've reached out to the, the schools to invite them either to join us at this meeting or to bring some parents who they know are involved in things in their neighborhoods, because from the way I see it, the schools are really our future. We either turn things around and have effective schools or we're gonna be in a real mess in Rochester. And so it's, it's imperative the neighborhoods protect and foster and bring the schools along and it's equally important for the schools to try to increase the cohesiveness of the neighborhood, which is one reason we've been pushing for community schools that predominate in local students to allow that, the schools to really build up some cohesiveness with the neighborhood, within the neighborhood. So, new business, is there any new business, although we've been talking on and off into that area? Any new business somebody would like to bring up? No?
I'll just like, I'll put the spotlight on Canal Street. There's a lot of redevelopment going on in the buildings that sat vacant. Nine Canal Street is now a multi-use commercial space with a barber shop, gym, jeweler, a photographer studio, vintage clothes, all kinds of little suites that small businesses and artisans can rent to sell their wares. So stay tuned to Nine Canal Street. And then the same person just bought the building next to it, which is 53 Canal Street. It's a three-story building and he's looking to get the trades programs in there. Really focused with both things, he's had some meetings of maybe getting like the woodworking students in there or electricians in there, so he's a very smart, young entrepreneur, commercial developer with good investors and a smart vision plan for Canal Street. And then East House is also moving on the VOA building. They just got their pilot agreement through the city for their taxes, so that's a good step, meaning that more money is on the way from the state. They need some more grant money from the state home money and to finish off their financing, but they've already gotten a good $10 million start on the project there. So Canal Street's gonna be a hopping place in about a year, hopefully sooner.
Great, great, nice to hear that things are coming together like that in, in your area. Yes, we. What, what's his name or?
Manny agrees.
Okay. See, John, did you have, you've been silent there, do you have something that you'd like to bring up as far as project reports? John, Karen?
Oh, um, um, the Rapid Cemetery Project, obviously on hold now with the winter season. West Side Farmer's Market presumably be getting started in the springtime again. St. Monica's is having a coat giveaway this Sunday from 1 until 3 at 830 Genese Street. A coat giveaway in a drive-through type of fashion, but other clothing items as well at no cost giveaway.
John?
Yeah?
I'd like to extend an invitation, like I was mentioning earlier. We're doing the second year, we're attempting to get a second year essay contest going for the children here in the City School District. So I'd like to extend an invitation, I will send you the link, so you can make it inclusive to your minutes to invite people who might be at the table, who might be interested in participating, either through sponsorship, donations. But the idea of it is, is to engage and try to make this move forward and become an annual activity for the children in this community. So I'll make sure I get the link out and I really would appreciate anyone and everyone who'd like to be a part of this effort.
Yeah, if you'd put it in the chat, that way we'll have, have it in writing and it's makes, makes it easier.
I have to send it through Melanie.
Okay.
Melanie will have to send it out to you.
Okay.
If you would be kind enough to include it to any of your minutes or notes, we would appreciate that, okay?
Yeah, send it to me and to Eleanor, because Eleanor is the keeper, the scribe for this group and.
I know.
Keeps this group alive, really. Okay.
John, and I'll take whatever's in the minutes and put it in the bulletin for my department to go out to community schools, okay?
That's great, that's great, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything that we should.
I'll send a flyer along with that.
Anything we should do to work with you, we'd love to do that.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else that someone wants to bring up? The, are you raising? Okay. As far as the schools committee, the education committee, we're very busy right now. I sit on five community engagement teams for the schools in the southwest. There's at least a couple that I should be more involved with than I am, but there's, there's a limit to how many you can get involved with. The City School District is a big place, even just the southwest quadrant. But it, it's moving along, I'm, I'm encouraged every time I sit in on one of these community engagement teams. The amount of energy that you see, the principals and vice principals, teachers, community outreach folks. It's, there's a lot of effort going on and we're trying to do what we can to, to help that. So I invite you to come to our Southwest Common Council Education Committee, which is next, next.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And I'll send out the link to everybody for that. I usually try to, yes, John?
But just like to mention that the Jefferson Avenue Seventh Day Adventist Church could really benefit from community support, especially financial support, as they need to rebuild their church. They do phenomenal work in terms of health fairs, food distribution, clothing distribution, and they are strong assets to our southwest quadrant, but they need help.
Is there any chance they'll be able to rebuild that church or is it too far gone?
I ride past it frequently, the front facade appears intact, but the sanctuary is, is, is gone. The roof is gone, but they definitely want to rebuild there. We've been able to help at St. Monica to do some storage of some materials for them, but the help that they need is, is just letting them know that their work in the past and the future is appreciated.
Okay. Good, we should, do you have some names to reach out to there?
Pastor Hanson Drysdale is the Seventh, it's Jefferson Avenue Seventh Day Adventist pastor there.
Okay. If you have contact info, if you want to put it in the chat, that would be helpful. Or do you have that, Eleanor?
Best bet is just to simply Google Jefferson Avenue Seventh Day Adventist. There's a number of news accounts there, plus connections for GoFundMe opportunities.
Okay, good.
I'll put that in the minutes.
Very good.
The link.
Yeah, that'd be good. Okay, well, we're six minutes past the hour. Is there anything else that we should touch on that somebody here knows about? Well, I'm delighted to see you back with us, Don, and, and for you and anybody else who is involved from various parts of the community, be sure to try to bring new people to the table, because while it's nice to see you in big boxes here, I'd like, I'd rather squint and have twice as many people at the table so that we're, we're sure that this, this group will thrive and continue on. So if there's anybody who's really active, who would be a good person to add to this group and to bring things to the table, please bring them. And I hope that some of you will join us at the meeting next Wednesday for the schools, Southwest Common Council Schools Committee. And if there's nothing else, I'll, we'll call it a wrap, is that?
Okay, I just want to make sure people noted in the chat that the 19th Ward does a mini clean sweep every month on the second Saturday of the month. And they're gonna focus on Bull's Head in February 12th. Oh, 10. Is it 10 to 12? 10 to noon. Oh, it's February, next one is February 12th, 10 to noon.
Okay. Has everybody captured what they would like to? We'll try to put things in the chat in the minutes, but I often get so busy, I forget to save the chat, but.
No, I've got the stuff from the chat.
Okay, good. Alrighty. Well, thank you very much for.
Thanks, guys, thank you for coming.
Did you have something you wanted to say, Lee? Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just reaching for a button.
Ah, okay. I know how that goes. Okay, great, well, thank you very much, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Nice having you join us, hope we'll see you again, thank you.